Good morning. Welcome to our September 2nd zoning hearing. We will get started with our pledge and then we will call our meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call our zoning hearing to order and I'll turn it over to Mr. Peterson to get us started with our agenda.
And thank you, Madam Chair. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When a case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. If you're opposed, please stand and raise your hand so you can be counted for the official record. After recognizing the applicant and any opposition, both parties will be asked to come forward and be sworn in. The applicant will testify first and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes in total. There's not a process to reserve your time and there's not a process for rebuttal, so please convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person here wishing to speak on the case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. After that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There are three withdrawn cases on today's agenda and these cases are withdrawn without prejudice. First case is resounding case Z-20 of 2025, Trayton LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard. LDP-32 of 2025, Robin S. Fowler. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard. And finally, SLEP-5 of 2025, Jose Jeneo. This case was withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Additionally, there's two cases on the agenda which have been continued and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z-2 of 2024, Flo Nore Development Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 7th, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-2 of 2024 will not be heard today. Additionally, resounding case Z-9 of 2025, Whataburger Restaurants LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 7th, 2025 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-9 of 2025 will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, I did get two requests for cases that need to be continued. First one is resounding case Z-17 of 2025, Little Sunshine's Playhouse. The applicant's attorney does have a legal matter somewhere else, Madam Chair and Board, and I don't think he's going to make it today, so the staff would ask you to continue resounding case Z-17 of 2025 until your October 7th hearing.
Okay. We need a motion for this, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, I entertain a motion for that.
Move to continue.
Second. We have a second from Commissioner Massey. Any discussion? Call to question? And the vote passes 5-0 to, that would be continue Z-17.
Thank you. Second case is resounding case Z-21 of 2025, Jose Jeneo. The applicant did call us this morning and they told us that they could not make it today. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z-21? There's no one here in opposition, so the staff would ask you to continue this case until your next hearing.
I make a motion to continue it until the October Planning Commission hearing, Z-21.
I do have a second.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Blaine. Any discussion? Call to question? And the vote passes 5-0 to continue Z-21.
Thank you. And before we start the hearing, I want to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your phones. When the phones ring, it does interfere with the broadcast and the presentations. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the hail to continue cases. All right, first case we're getting here today is resounding case Z-18, Race Track Inc., who requests rezoning from PSC to NRC for convenience store at fuel sales in Landlaw 583 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northwest intersection of Bell's Ferry Road and Barrett Parkway. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-18? Please raise your hands. 24? Okay, left of record show there's 24 people here opposed to rezoning case Z-18. And all those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Good morning. Planning Commissioners, good morning. Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant owners in this application for rezoning here on behalf of Race Track for this property located intersection of Bell's Ferry Road and Barrett Parkway. This property is two acres located at this intersection. Its location here by the future land use map, you see it's in the dead center. That's where that intersection is located. This piece is the PSC tract. It's a two-acre rectangular tract located on the north side of Barrett Parkway and the west side of Bell's Ferry Road. You can see where it's positioned there. Importantly, for your consideration, this is showing you the future land use map for this area. What's dominant at this intersection is that the intersection is a commercial intersection. You can see if you're coming from your left to right on your future land use map as you come from 575 and you come towards this intersection along Barrett Parkway. All that you see in red, that's a community activity center consisting of multiple commercial activities, businesses, and uses as a commercial activity center. Once you get to this intersection, you can see it's denoted in pink. That's pink because this intersection has been designated as a neighborhood activity center and one that's been a neighborhood activity center for many, many years. The property itself has been shown as a neighborhood activity center. One thing I want to also point out is that of this activity center, the commercial properties both across the street on Barrett Parkway, Caddy Corner at the other corner of Bell's Ferry and Barrett Parkway, the other commercial properties that are designated within this neighborhood activity center are all adjacent to residential. The one property that's in this neighborhood activity center that's not adjacent to residential is this two-acre piece. It's the only one. All the others at this intersection back up to residential in some form or fashion within this activity center. What does that tell you? It tells you that Cobb County's future land use plan and comprehensive plan adopted by the Board of Commissioners has designated this property for future use as commercial within this neighborhood activity center. Turning now, I want to focus just on the zoning categories themselves and which is why we're here. Again, same look, same intersection. You see this property is zoned planned shopping center. That's what PSC is. Planned Shopping Center is a commercial category. It's no longer a viable commercial category since the mid-'90s when Cobb County amended its zoning ordinance and PSC cannot be used, but this property has been zoned commercial. It's obvious why. It's adjacent to a public shopping center that's zoned general commercial. One of the most intense commercial categories that we have is GC and it's located within a community activity center and Zone GC is a Publix shopping center that surrounds this property on two sides. Directly across the street, meaning directly across Barrett Parkway, is properties that are zoned PSC again and NS, neighborhood shopping. What are those uses? One is an automotive repair. There used to be a gas station and the other is a third or fourth tier type of shopping center, old-style shopping center that's been there for years and years and years, primarily dominated on the Bell's Ferry side by Quick Mart, which is a convenience store, which buys signage on the outside of the building, sells beer, wine, and cigarettes as well. On the opposite side of this intersection, on the other corner, that's Zone GC and NRC that you see there, that's a CVS location at that GC. So again, just by looking at the zoning map itself in conjunction with your future land use plan, I think there's one thing that we can all agree on, and that is rightfully this property, the subject property, this two-acre site should be and is commercial. It's commercial today. We can't use it commercially, but it is commercial today and should be commercial in the future. Why are we here? We're here because your zoning ordinance, the Cobb County zoning ordinance says that for properties zoned PSC located in neighborhood activity center, they must be brought in for rezoning prior to any development and that rezoning must be consistent with the future land use plan designation for this property, which is a neighborhood activity center. And we are seeking rezoning to the NRC category, a commercial category, for a convenience store with fuel sales, which is what the Race Track is. And we're all familiar with Race Track and their operations. And again, this property is properly commercial. If the county and Cobb County did not want this or envision this property as being something other than commercial, they've had 50 years, the county has, to designate it to some other category or to designate this intersection to some other future land use category. Cobb County has chosen to do neither. Instead, Cobb County has maintained this intersection as a commercial intersection by virtue of its future land use plan designation and by virtue of the zoning categories that are reflected on this zoning map. Also now, I want to turn actually to the site plan for the Race Track at this location. This is our proposed site plan with the main building being the one you see kind of tucked to the corner in the back left with the canopy and gas canopy more towards the corner. We have access on Bell's Ferry, which is a right-in, right-out access only, and then a full access on Barrett Parkway at the far end of our property there on the left. This, in terms of road improvements, that will be a right-in, right-out. In addition, we will be constructing a full right-hand turn lane that is much needed turning from Bell's Ferry onto Barrett Parkway. Those are the road improvements that are primarily included here as well as providing along our property's frontage, the 10-foot sidewalk on Bell's Ferry, which is a continuation of a project that the county has been very much interested in. This particular location is ideal for a convenience store with food, with fuel sales. Why is that? By its very definition, a convenience store needs to be convenient to passersby traffic and needs to be convenient to those who would use it. Convenience stores with fuel sales such as Race Track are not traffic generators. People assume that they generate traffic, but they do not generate traffic and that's been borne out and well documented in the studies. They don't generate traffic. People who stop at a convenience store stop there because they're going on their way to work or they're coming home from work. They're on their way home, coming back from home. They're on their way to drop their kids off to school or visiting their school or on their way back from school. It's already existing traffic that's on these two very heavily traveled roads at this very heavily traveled intersection, which is congested. There's no question about it. But again, a convenience store such as Race Track operates based off of existing traffic coming in because it's convenient. The use itself as a Race Track is not inherently evil. I dare say that almost or nearly every one of us this past weekend over Labor Day stopped at a convenience store with fuel sales at some point or the other. We all do. If you didn't do it this weekend, you did it last week when you needed to fill up. We all do that and we all use convenience stores with fuel sales. They're not inherently evil. We are all there. I went yesterday to the Race Track that's right down the street from me because it's convenient. At this location, it does demand that. It does demand that we have a convenient commercial location and it's ideally suited for a Race Track. Race Track itself, if you're not familiar, Race Track is one of Cobb County's finest corporate citizens. It's headquartered here in Cobb County. They run a fantastic business. Why do I go there? Why do others go to Race Track? Because you know when you arrive, you've arrived at a place that's safe, secure, arrived at a place that they know how to operate and maintain their stores and their facilities and their property in a first-class manner. That's why we go there. That's why I go there. And again, from a security standpoint, they run a state-of-the-art security system as part of every Race Track store. They're tied in directly to Cobb County Police Department, can contact them on an immediate basis, as well as have security cameras that are likewise tied in directly to the Cobb County Police Department. They partner with the Cobb County Police Department at all times for not only the sake of their stores, but also their guests and their customers so that they are secure and securely run. The other aspect of Race Track that we think is highly important, because we're not going to simply stand here and ignore the fact that there is a elementary school, Bell's Ferry Elementary School is directly across the street, across this county and across all of the regions and areas where Race Track is located, they actually partner with schools. They provide teachers and PTAs and school facilities and they partner with those schools to provide them with things that are needed, things that may be desired as well. And partnering with our neighborhood schools, they do an excellent job. And again, why do they do that? It's because they're an excellent corporate citizen and an excellent corporate citizen of this county. Again, this property is commercial and should rightfully be commercial going forward. We believe that the application is proper in all respects, number one. Number two, so does staff. Your professional staff has recommended approval with conditions and we are in agreement with those conditions. We respectfully request your recommendation of approval today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll hear from our opposition to this particular application. I believe those, a few folks were sworn in and you can go ahead and make your way to the front. Just remember that you have 10 minutes across all of those that oppose and would like to speak, so please be cognizant of that, to share your time. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please proceed with your thoughts.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Erin Quackenbush. I've been a resident of the Barrett Creek subdivision for 17 years. I've also been a proud Bell's Ferry Elementary School parent since my daughter started kindergarten in 2018. I ask that you deny the zoning change request to put a Race Track gas station adjacent to both the elementary school and the kinder care, daycare. There is not a need for, there's not a business need for a gas station in our community. There are two gas stations within half a mile of the site, five gas stations within one mile, and at least 10 within two miles. You can reach 10 different gas stations within a five-minute drive. We are not in any need of additional gas stations. We are not living in a gas station desert. This is a business that operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and will sell alcohol and tobacco products during those times. This location on the corner of the NAC represents an increase in intensity to the surrounding areas, which all have limited hours and limited lighting. This is not in alignment with the other businesses. This location should be a step down in intensity between Publix and the residential areas, not a step up. In addition, the current traffic study does not take into consideration the additional 600 homes that are currently being built on Bell's Ferry or the additional traffic that will result from the expansion of the elementary school. A gas station at this location presents fire and explosion risk. Benzene, toluene, and other volatile organic compounds, VOCs, are released during fuel dispensing, pumping from delivery from tanker trucks, and venting from underground storage tanks. These compounds are linked to respiratory irritation, headaches, dizziness, and long-term exposure risks, including cancer, particularly leukemia, as benzene is a known carcinogen. Regardless of the technology that Race Track claims to use, this will still be an issue for the surrounding areas and the children of the daycare and the elementary school. In addition, despite Race Track's claims that they have safety measures in place, there have been multiple shooting incidents resulting in homicide at Race Track gas stations in the metro Atlanta area. This includes suburban areas. We're not talking about urban crime. We're talking about places like Brookhaven and Lithia Springs have had homicides at Race Track gas stations. In the past year, there have been three community lawsuits against Race Track, the most recent in Lufkin, Texas, in which an injunction was upheld. Race Track is clearly trying to invade communities that do not want their presence and must be taken to lawsuits and draw negative press to the area, which is not the kind of attention that I believe Cobb County wants. I would also ask that Commissioner Allen's recommendations in this case be closely scrutinized as he has received both campaign contributions and a stated endorsement on his website from Race Track. To my knowledge, he is the only commissioner to receive this endorsement and I think this at best creates a question over his loyalties and at worst is a serious conflict of interest. Please consider the children of our community. It is not appropriate to have this type of business in this proximity to small children. I implore that you deny this zoning, rezoning request and make a statement about who is truly important in our community, children or multinational corporations. And if you do choose to approve despite all of the inputs from local citizens, please explain to my son and his classmates, as well as the other children at Bell's Ferry and kinder care, why this is actually a good choice. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Max. My name is Max Ramsey. I'm in fourth grade and I go to Bell's Ferry Elementary School. I have gone to Bell's Ferry since I was in kindergarten. I love school and I love my school and I hate missing school, but my parents are letting me miss school this morning and I think this is important to tell you how I feel about this. I do not think that you should let Race Track build a gas station across from my school because it will pollute the air and the earth. My friends have allergies and asthma, so it would be harder for them to breathe. This would not be good for our health. My family walks to school every day and there would be more traffic and it would be harder to cross the road and people would get hurt. And it's already pretty busy. There would be an increase in crime and I am scared of shooting, robbery, and homelessness across the street. Please do not allow a gas station to be built across the street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We also have someone else that would like to speak. Please come up to the front, state your name for the record, please, sir.
I'm Carl Eli and I've lived in Cobb County for the past nearly 40 years. I'm a retired police officer from Cobb County with 27 years of experience. I was stationed at Precinct 1, which is in Kennesaw, that covers the area of Bell's Ferry and Barrett Parkway. During my tenure at Precinct 1, I would normally, when I worked 11 or 12, which is the area that is covered by that parcel of property, I would sit in the north entrance to Bell's Ferry Elementary School. I would write more than a book of tickets a day whenever I would sit there for people turning left out of the right-in, right-out-only entrance to 50 Barrett Parkway, which is where Publix is located. I would also sit in the south entrance to Bell's Ferry Elementary School and write tickets to the people making a left turn into 50 Barrett Parkway. You put another right-in, right-out entrance in that vicinity, that close to the intersection, you're going to have people turning left out of Race Track onto Bell's Ferry Road, crossing what looks to be about four lanes of traffic now, in addition to going into the northbound lanes for the people that are turning out of there. You will also have people turning left into that entrance because they don't want to traverse the entire intersection and turn left onto Barrett Parkway. Same thing on Barrett Parkway. You'll have people turning left out of this complex onto Barrett Parkway and people turning right. You're putting much more traffic hazards into that area of traffic flow, which will be disrupted tremendously, especially during school hours. Would be a safety hazard, not only for the children that live there or go to school there, but also for the daycare, for the already current heavy traffic into and out of 50 Barrett Parkway. There are multiple entrances to 50 Barrett Parkway. Most of them are ignored. They go to Bell's Ferry Road and they turn left across the southbound traffic or they turn left across the southbound traffic from Bell's Ferry Road into that shopping center. Do we want to exacerbate that situation by approving zoning this property for a Race Track? I frequent Race Track myself. I have nothing at all against Race Track. I used to be a quick-trip fan and now I'm a Race Track fan. So it's nothing personal against Race Track, but I wholeheartedly hope that this commission will take into account what a traffic nightmare that is being created. If you go and sit at the entrance, the most southern entrance to the CVS, watch traffic patterns in the evening for the northbound Bell's Ferry Road traffic, they enter the southbound lanes of traffic in order to reach the left-turn lanes for traffic going onto Barrett Parkway. They head face-on into the southbound traffic. Same thing in the mornings and in the evenings for southbound Bell's Ferry Road traffic. They enter into the northbound lanes to pass the traffic that is backed up at that intersection. They ignore the lane markings, they ignore all of the striped-off gore areas and the traffic dividers. I'm sure if Race Track is allowed to build at this intersection, they will put something similar to what Publix Shopping Center had put on Bell's Ferry Road's entrance, concrete median that's there. People just pull up to the intersection, turn left around it. There are signs posted, both northbound and coming out of that shopping center. I thank you for your attention and I do hope you consider the risks that will be involved with traffic accidents to occur. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning. Planning Commissioners, Travis McCombs, Cobb County School District. Approval of this petition will cause concern for Cobb County, excuse me, Cobb County School District because it would cause a hindrance on our school traffic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I think that basically close to wraps of our time, but any other opposition to speak? Okay? And with that, this is going to be in District 2, so I will turn it over to Commissioner Anderson to lead the discussion with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairwoman Fosset. So I have a couple of questions of different staff members, the opposition, as well as the support. And so I'm going to start with, just to kind of tee it up, the gentleman from, Mr. McCombs from the School District, and then I'm going to call up Stormwater and then would love, just had a couple of questions for the Planning Department and then also had a, then subsequently questions for the applicant and might have one or one call after that, but that's kind of the order. So if I can have the representative from the School District come up, that'd be perfect.
Excellent. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. McCombs, can you tell us the current enrollment levels at Bell's Ferry and what they are expected to be post-expansion within, call it a year from now?
I don't have the enrollments on me, but as of right now, we're currently adding on to that school. We had to ship some of the students, I believe, fourth, fifth grade down to Chalker due to current construction. current construction, so we're currently adding on to that school.
Okay. So do you have a sense of how many students will be added on post-expansion?
Well, I don't have the total instructional units.
Okay. I'm just trying to see what, how the enrollment might increase versus where it was now and where it's gonna be like, once that expansion is complete. Do we have any data on that?
I don't have the current enrollment for Bell's Ferry.
Okay. All right. Also, for your comments on the mitigation or the impact, and this might be a question for planning, but is there currently a traffic management system where there is an officer that directs the traffic there during the school release and entry hours? Or is that something that does not, to your knowledge, currently exist?
To my knowledge, no, but we've currently altered our queuing lines. We doubled the queuing lines to kind of relieve traffic from being into the roadway, main roadway.
Okay. But as of your understanding is that there is not actually an officer directing kind of traffic?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay. All right. Do any of my fellow commissioners have a question? Mr. McCombs? Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I had another question of the, actually, opposition. So I think there was, trying, Mrs., well, actually, Mr., was it Mr. Levy, the gentleman? I might have, I'm sorry if I got your name wrong, but the gentleman who spoke, retired Cobb PD. May you come up to the stand, please? And I'm sorry if I got your name incorrect.
Just so that it'll be correct, my last name is Eli.
Eli, I completely bombed that. I'm sorry about that, but I got one letter right, maybe. Mr. Eli. So I just wanted to thank you for your comments earlier. Do you have any knowledge of whether there is a officer stationed for circulating traffic both during dismissal and arrival hours at Bell's Ferry?
I would not have knowledge to that. I work for the Cobb County Police Department, not Cobb County Campus Police.
Okay.
That'd be handled under their jurisdiction.
Okay. Got it. Great. And then I guess you'd mentioned that, just, I wanted to understand this, the traffic point that you were speaking to from, I don't know if the map's on the screen, but that right-in, right-out entrance just north of where the label Bell's Ferry Road is?
Yes.
So you were, when you were speaking about the volume of tickets for illegal turns, just to confirm, that was the point that you were talking about?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Great.
On the map, it looks considerable, a considerable distance from where the racetrack would be located. It is actually not.
Okay.
It is very, very close.
Okay. Great. And also, final question for me is, can you speak to the partnership or policies with the police department and the, during your tenure there at least, and the fueling stations where there are just generally direct lines of communication with those property owners or a formal, like, infrastructure for management of security tied in with the police?
I retired in 2016.
Okay.
And at that time, there were no types of direct communication except through an alarm company with the police department. And that would go through the nine-one-one communications center.
Okay. Mr. Eli, thank you very much. I appreciate. Wait, let me just ask if any of my other commissioners have any other questions? All right, great. Thank you. And then for Mrs. Quackenbush, I'd like to have her come up.
And I can answer a couple of the questions that you asked of Mr. Eli. There is occasionally an officer on duty, but more often it is a crossing guard who is directing traffic. It is a pretty dangerous intersection. They have, as part of the construction, rerouted some of the traffic, but we still do have the circumstance. The entrance to the school is literally straight across from the Publix, and we have people turning in ways that they should not, in and out during dismissal and during drop-off in the morning.
Okay. Great. Thank you for answering that. And do you happen to have any information on the enrollment growth expectations?
So we have, I think, around seven-hundred-and-fifty students right now. Our second and third grade are at Chalker Elementary while we are doing the renovation. My understanding from how they presented it is that the school will be able to hold up to a thousand students once the expansion is complete. We're going from one floor to three floors in one section of the building and maintaining the other, the other spaces. When the school, before the expansion happened, we had, I think, four trailers outside of the school to hold the overflow of students.
Okay. Got it. Excellent. And then, so this is more of a general question, so given that this site was obviously occupied by a historic structure ahead of time, and it's surrounded by a lot of commercial uses, I'm always just curious, what would an ideal use look like if you did program something here?
I think something like mixed-use townhome with businesses, office space, small business, retail, would not create the same amount of traffic that a gas station would. I'm also concerned about the twenty-four-seven nature of the gas station, because even these surrounding businesses that they mentioned that are across the street are closed at night. So the lights are down, they are closed, there's no traffic at night, and so that, to me, is also a concern. So a business that would run, you know, shut down by ten PM and, you know, open during business hours as opposed to twenty-four-seven.
Okay. Great. And then you said something, I think, which was, you'd said, if I remember, if I heard it correctly, that there were five gas stations within a mile?
Yes.
Did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
So when I looked up on the map, I noticed that there was kind of a clustering, obviously you have the QuickTrip cross-street, but
Yep.
More so to the west than the east?
Yep.
So if, are those gas stations that are within a mile, to your knowledge, are those more concentrated west of this site or east of this site?
Well, there's some that are, let's see, I guess it would be south on Bell's Ferry. There's actually two that are across the street from one another.
Yep.
So that is very close. There's none west, primarily because those are residential areas. So, you know, we're not, they're not situated to have a gas station. The next gas station would probably be on Cannon Road.
Yeah, that's the ones where I've noticed. And so I guess I only ask that because I'm trying to just understand a little bit more about what are some suitable uses. And so I appreciate you providing some of your thoughts on that, and also the enrollment data for Bell's Ferry, which of course, we can confirm and everything, but thank you for giving us that
Of course.
That context. Do any of my other commissioners have any questions? Mrs. Quackenbush? Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to call up Stormwater.
Hello, good morning. Andrew Heath, Cobb County Stormwater Management.
Good morning, Andrew. So one of the questions that I heard when we were, I'm just trying to look at your comments right here a little bit more, there were some, can you speak a little bit about the separation systems that are used to control, given that this has been identified as a hotspot? One, how, I guess, how often are those systems actually inspected and what the kind of maintenance regime? It was a question that during the community meeting, we heard, and some concern expressed about how often those are actually inspected and what kind of treatment expectations are there on an ongoing basis. Can you talk a little bit about more of that?
Yeah, and so the, I guess the idea there is that any site that was developed would have to provide for stormwater management for the site. There are some sites, and particularly sites, that might involve, like, fueling of vehicles, transfer of fuels between trucks and tanks and things like that, would qualify as what's referred to as a hotspot for water quality contamination, because there's always the chance that you could get fuels or some other oils, even if it was just drippings from cars into the stormwater runoff. So the hotspot treatment is usually a system that's trying to separate out things that are lighter than water or heavier than water from the water itself, so that that kind of pre-filtered water is what goes on into the storm drainage system. That system, you know, how frequently it needs to be maintained, I think it would depend on the site. Usually, the gas stations are inspecting those things. They typically are not for most commercial facilities that have things like that. They're not typically providing us, like, you know, reports that say, hey, we've maintained it. It's something that they're maintaining as part of their normal work on-site. It would depend on, you know, how much contamination was entering it and how often, you know, it needed to be maintained. And so that maintenance interval might vary a little bit. And so that would be something that really, the way we're operating now, the, in this particular case, it's a gas station, but whoever the operator of the site is, they would maintain it by inspecting it for themselves. And obviously, if they knew they had a problem, like, let's say they did have a fuel spill or something on-site, then they would know, okay, hey, we need to go service that because probably that ran to that device and now we need to go service it. So the actual maintenance interval, as long as there's no spill or something like that, is probably relatively long, I would bet, probably, I would imagine, probably at least semi-annually. And, but they would inspect it, see what's there and see how frequently it needs to be maintained.
Got it. So the applicant would have the sole responsibility for maintenance, but the schedule of that maintenance, is there any binding requirement or per-code on how frequently that? I just want to make sure I'm understanding it.
Yeah. There isn't a code requirement that says you have to maintain it X amount of time.
Got it.
Facilities like this that will be privately maintained, and not just that, but the whole, the whole site, the whole storm drainage system and everything will be privately maintained. The county will enter into a maintenance agreement with them so that essentially the maintenance agreement says, you, the operator, you're responsible for the maintenance, but it breaks out in that, hey, this is what you have, you have an underground detention system, you have this water quality treatment, pretreatment system. And so that's a nice document because as time changes and you have different managers or someone at the facility, they can always go back to that document and look at it, and it helps them to remember, oh, hey, I need to be doing this, I need to be doing that. But the document does give the county, if for some reason it were a worst-case scenario and the private owner couldn't maintain it for some reason, then the county does have the legal authority to intervene if there were, like, a real public health hazard and the owner wasn't doing anything about it. So we will have that in place.
Okay. But the burden is on the owner to notify the county that there, that existing, that condition exists unless it gets to a point where it's
Unless it became very obvious, like, and someone complained or someone said, hey, this thing smells, or there was something like that where there was an actual complaint made to us, yeah, then otherwise, it would be, it would just be privately maintained, they would inspect it, they would maintain it.
Okay. Do we have, have we had any situations, to your knowledge, where as part of a zoning, there have been more, I guess, formalized maintenance intervals or at least inspection intervals?
Um, I'm trying to remember.
Are these recommendations of Stormwater that have come out?
Yeah, I don't know about in the actual zoning process, maybe during plan review. Yeah, maybe during that period of time, there might be something, especially as development, developed in that maintenance agreement I was telling you about, that would typically kind of be an appendix to the hydrology study. They would usually lay out in there, hey, this is kind of the schedule that we foresee, hey, you need to service this every six months, or you need to inspect it every month or something like that and service it every six months or something. There are some guidelines like that, yeah.
Got it. Okay, that helps. So, all right, that's good to know. And then, just switching on gears on that, the, so given that there's, it's an undeveloped lot right now, that given that the historic house has been relocated, the actual level of runoff that that generates, can you confirm whether that level of runoff, what, how does that relate to that baseline right now? How much runoff will they have to make sure leaves this site? Is it less than what's currently there? Is it the level of what's currently there as a vacant, unoccupied lot? Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, absolutely. So that site, because it's essentially going to be completely demolished when this site is built, that whole site will have to be considered in its pre-developed condition as if it were a forest, basically. So that's the least for our area, that's the best you can get in terms of, imagine I could just snap my fingers and just make that appear as a forest, that's how they would have to model the runoff from the site. The site, though, of course, as you mentioned, it had a driveway on it, it had a barn, some other outbuildings, it had the home on it, so it was not undeveloped before, so it actually had, it actually had some impervious area on it.
Yep.
So they'll, when they take it back to that natural condition, it's actually gonna be less runoff, leaving the site runoff rate than, than it was actually in its developed condition as a house. So we're gonna be a little bit more restrictive on that.
Okay. And the, there is a request for a slight variance of, I think, four percent extra of impervious coverage. Any reason to think that that would not, based on your review of the site plan today? It seems like that's something that could be engineered away, I should say, as opposed to a variance?
Yeah.
But want to know if there's any kind of relegating or limiting issues that, why this site can't kind of just be within the coded kind of impervious coverage?
Right. And that certainly could be done. The applicant would just have to find a way to kind of squeeze in here or there and just get rid of that little extra four percent that they're over, and then that would bring them back to the seventy percent, I believe is the maximum for the site. And so, yeah, certainly they could do that, and the applicant would just have to decide, hey, this is how we want to squeeze it to make it fit.
Okay.
And Commissioner Anderson, it's been, it's my understanding that the site plan was revised to reduce it down to seventy percent maximum impervious.
Okay.
So that variance has gone away.
All right, so that variance now no longer is needed. Okay. Thank you for updating that. Okay. So let me make a note of that. And then the only other question that I had, and I know this might be more of a grading exercise, but when you look at the map there, there is, you know, the slope down into the site that's north, you know, from the kind of high point on the site, which is where, I guess, the C store will probably be located, and it's hard to kind of see, but the, are there any recommendations that will, that you've run up, that will ensure that some of that runoff that would naturally occur would not actually impact the adjacent site? Would that just basically be just the grading exercise where everything is just going into those detention systems?
Yeah, and because this site is gonna be, of course, paved, probably most of the site is gonna be surrounded by curb and gutter and, or, and/or the grading is going to be used to contain that runoff and get it to go to the storm drainage system. If they had much in the way of what we call bypass, that is, area that's not being captured, that's just running off the site, if you have so-called impervious bypass, those tend to really catch up on your flow rates real fast and you, we wouldn't allow you to do that. So they would have to design the site, and it probably will be done that way anyway because it's gonna have parking and the buildings, you're gonna have curb and gutter around the perimeter, and then that can be used to capture and channel that runoff to inlets. And so between that and just the way the overall site is sloped and graded, they would have to capture that runoff and get it to the storm drainage system so that they could, you know, basically, the only thing that there might be a little strip of, like, landscaping or something like that, perhaps around the perimeter that might bypass, but that would be a very, very small, you know, landscaped area, but that's about all the bypass that they would be able to have.
Okay. All right. Thank you for providing that detail. Does any of, do any of my fellow commissioners have questions of Stormwater? Okay, great. Thank you. Let's talk to traffic. Hi. Morning, Amy.
Good morning.
So, Amy, can you tell us, well, the, so I think we got the traffic study, the second submission. Is that correct?
Yes, we received it on the end of last week.
Okay. So, and that was, that was after the, or in time for the deadline?
Correct.
So after the deadline?
It was after the deadline.
Okay. All right. So I understand, there might be some, I know you've updated some of the comments on it, but is the traffic study still under review from DOT, or are the comments that were sent and circulated as part of the packet based on a review of that submission?
Yeah, so we submitted updated comments because we knew that there were a lot of questions with the questions with the board about, about this case, and we wanted to answer everything we could, even though that is going to be an interim update, because we will have to update it again after we complete the review of the traffic study.
Got it, all right.
But it had everything that we had reviewed, plus the updated stipulation letter, plus the updated site plan, plus we had had a meeting on that Thursday before we submitted comments last Friday, so the day before, we had actually talked to the applicant team in a, in a meeting.
Okay. Thank you. And what was the date of the traffic counts used in that study?
I believe May 6th, but hang on, I will confirm my memory. Of this year, so just so that's clear. Yes, Tuesday, May 6th.
Okay. So still during school, but at a school where free-expansion, of course?
Correct. That, if, so, okay, so a couple of things, the build-out year for this development is 27.
Okay.
So, you know, it's only, it's going in place very quickly. So, some of the questions we would need to answer is, if the traffic study does need to take the expansion into account, is, were any of those people that have been currently moved to another school, were they moved at that time? You know, is the expansion going to be in place by 27? Those, those are the questions that would need to be answered. We were not aware of the, of an expansion that was going to significantly affect enrollment when the traffic study was applied for, so we did not direct them to account for anything specific.
Okay, got it. And then, thank you for that. Then, just, on, on the traffic study, there's some assumptions that usually you approve, and as, as the applicant had mentioned, most of these, you know, generally, we've seen kind of assumptions of about 75% of the traffic already is there and passing through, so net 25% of it is actually net new. Is that consistent with what was reflected in, or what is the actual assumptions in the traffic study?
Yes, so, what they were referencing is, is a true thing that basically, certain uses, specifically fast food restaurants and convenience stores, gas stations, have a lot of what we call pass-by traffic. And that means it is traffic that is already on the road that is going on another trip that makes a stop at a, because of the convenience of the location to refuel, get food, whatever that they're doing. The percentage is 75 to 76%, depending on the time of day. So that means that of their trip generation, which you guys have in your notes, only a quarter of that are going to be new trips on the road, according to all the statistics that we have. However, we provide you the raw trip generation, because all of those trips are still going to impact the driveways. Because, just because they're already on the road, they still have to turn into the driveway, they still have to turn out of the driveway. And so when you're looking at driveway operations, the raw trip values are still very important.
Okay. Great. And when you're calculating those traffic impacts, are you looking at it on a per-pump, or is it a combination of retail and number of pumps? Just want to think through how we, what's the driver of the traffic estimates that you have?
Certainly. So, under the, the edition of the Trip Generation Manual, the national resource that we use to calculate trip generation, it was done under the 11th edition, and what that does is, it does do it by pump for convenience stores. But what they've done is they have subcategorized, basically, some certain ranges on how big the associated convenience store is. Under 5,000 square feet has one trip generation rate, between 5 and 10,000 square feet of a convenience store has a different trip generation rate, and then ones that have convenience stores that are over 10,000 square feet has a third. So, most of our trip generations do fall into that center category, including this one, since this one has a, I believe, a square footage of around 6,000. So, and then at that point, it is associated per-pump, because in general, a larger convenience store is associated with more pumps, you know, because it is physically larger. And so, they have accommodated basically kind of the draw of the convenience store and the resources that are there, but at the same time, what they found is the driving trip generation variable, so to speak, is, is the number of pumps that are available.
Got it, so, whether, so I guess said differently, whether a convenience store is 5,000 square feet or 10,000 square feet, the trip generation says those all have kind of the same per-pump generation characteristics of traffic?
Correct.
Okay.
Though a larger square-footage convenience store is more likely to have more pumps, so that's kind of figured into that, so.
Okay.
So, if you, if you have a 10,000 square feet store, it might have 24 pumps, and so, it, it's, convenience store is drawing more traffic, but it also has more pumps drawing more traffic, and that kind of collates together.
Okay. Yeah, and, yeah, the reason I, that's helpful information, because, you know, the business of a gas station is really, the trunk is more so, you make money at the convenience store, not the fuel stations. And so that's, it's curious that the number of fuel stations, there's such a wide range where it's just fixed, especially since I looked at the, I think, six cases we've had in the last three years, actually eight, of fueling stations, and I think this is the largest, outside of one that actually racetrack proposed ahead of time, which was, had EV stations and things like that. But, okay, that's helpful information.
And as, as EV becomes more common, I mean, basically, a new, a new version of the Trip Generation Manual is, is on its way out now.
Okay.
So by next year, you know, we may have a different answer to that question, we just have to go along with whatever the national standard is to, of the methodology to follow.
Got it, okay. And then, level of service. So, level of service on Bell's Ferry right now is a D, Ernest Barrett, on Barrett Parkway, a D. How do we think about what trips that into F?
So, basically, that number that we, we give to you, and again, this is kind of a bird's eye view, high-level view of the level of service in the area, because it is based on an ADT, which is average daily traffic. So that's not looking at how much is happening during certain peak hours, which is what our traffic studies focus on, because that's much more data-intensive. And really, kind of the experience people remember, but there are some generalized tables published by, by Greta, the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, that use daily traffic, so that we can get an idea of, given this daily traffic, what is this road operating at? The threshold for that road, well, currently, Bell's Ferry, according to the count that we had, was a little over 10,000, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Hold on, I'm pulling it up, so I'm not doing this by memory. Trying to, but it's not pulling up. So, but basically, that, the number that's in your notes is the number that we use to compare against these Greta tables. The Greta table threshold from going to E to F is 16,000. So you look at that and you say, well, there's a lot of capacity left. But then you have to remember during the peak hour, which is what the traffic study looks at, it, it's really controlled by the signalized intersections or the unsignalized intersections, what's happening there, because it's not just who's traveling on that one road, but how long do they have to wait for the people on Bell's, on Barrett Parkway, you know, to be able to turn? So that is what we were looking at when reviewing the traffic study. We're still reviewing their analysis, but the, just to give you an idea, the analysis does support the D as far as an overall intersection level of service at those intersections, when it stays a D in the future, but we're, we're digging into that to make sure that we're in agreement.
Okay. So this, so kind of just laying out some of the, where we stand on kind of the traffic facts, so, we, level of service as currently modeled doesn't change, but the model estimates and assumptions don't fully reflect expansion and increased enrollment? That, is that fair to say?
If, if
At the traffic study level? I know the traffic study and Greta are two different things, but
Right.
It sounds like, and correct me if I'm not saying it right, the, your analysis so far suggests that the level of service with this program would still remain a D?
Overall.
Overall, okay.
Now, the, the approach for Bell's Ferry, when you, when you're looking at delay, you might have more delay on one approach of a signalized intersection than another. The approach for the southbound is actually an E and F, depending on the time of day, according to the initial analysis that we looked at. So, basically, because other approaches, Barrett Parkway primarily, is getting more time, the people are more delayed on, on Bell's Ferry at that intersection. Overall, it's a D, but when you look at approach by approach, Bell's Ferry has more delay than Barrett Parkway, because it's got less traffic.
And so Bell's Ferry specifically would, if I'm hearing this correctly, move, have the risk of moving from a D to a E or F?
That is what we're still reviewing, is whether or not the, there's a discrepancy in the future analysis that we need to line up before, I can say that for sure.
Okay, great. All right. Does that, do any of my fellow commissioners have questions, DOT? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. John, planning. So, I guess it's always useful to walk through kind of your thoughts behind the recommendation here. So, do you mind just giving us your thoughts on the recommendation? I had some questions on kind of prior cases that, to help us think about how we traditionally as a board looked at this?
Sure. You know, when the staff reviews this, we look at five things that are required by the code. You know, we, we check this, check, we check to see if the use is suitable in view of what's around it, and the staff did find it was suitable, you know, seeing how three of the four sections of this intersection are already zoned commercially. You know, we looked to see if the proposed use would adversely affect adjacent properties, and we did not find anything about this case that would adversely affect adjacent or nearby properties. We looked at the future land use map, which is a neighbor activity center, which allows this type of use, it allows this, this specific use in the category. We looked to see if there was any negative effects to streets, utilities, schools, and we did not find any. You know, this type of use is typically found at intersections of RT or roadways. And then we just looked at any other thing that could be useful, you know, we use our professional perspective, and we found that this use was a typical use you would find in a commercial location.
Okay.
And there were two variances that were on the initial plan, Commissioner Anderson, and both those variances have been done away with now. So then, now they meet the setbacks, and now they meet the impervious surface limitations.
Great, thank you. And just as a follow-up on terms of the impact on neighboring, does the planning commission, there were some comments around, you know, environmental effects and hazards, and I know there's, you know, guidance from the EPA on, you know,